We're going to start our meeting off this evening with a technology report by Mr. Joe Waite, our technology supervisor. Mr. Waite, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, good thing it's not snowing this evening. A little bit of rain is better than snow.
It wasn't snowing last Tuesday evening either.
It wasn't? Okay.
It was falling yet from nine o'clock in the morning last week.
There we go.
There was no national argument, there was no state law to see it.
All right, well, sorry to bring that subject up.
Kids were safe, you don't think shot in the gun.
I think she's safe.
All right, back to the tech reports. So I wrote up the tech report for you and shared it with you last week or the week prior. Just to highlight a couple items. Really, we're working with our one-to-one. We moved out to Rife then, and we're slowly rolling out the devices to go home. Currently, fifth grade is still staying in the classroom. Sixth grade is going home every night. I think Dr. Freeze is looking forward to getting fifth grade moving ahead here shortly because it's logistics with their schedule. At the end of the day, kids in fifth grade are traveling with sixth grade kids for Eagle Block, and it just could be more convenient and also would start allowing the kids to do more work and using some of the technology at home. So we'll see that happen probably in the next month. Junior and senior high are continuing to do some great things. I have some statistics basically to share about the number of unique page hits, the use of Schoology and assignments. Schoology being the learning management platform that we're using to build our courses and classes online. Our K-4 buildings are doing a lot more than they've been doing. We have a lot more resources for them. A Chromebook cart, roughly a Chromebook cart for every grade to share. Lots of iPads for centers and for different uses in the classroom. We've been doing some cool Google expeditions. And to see a lot of the exciting stuff that's happening, I would encourage you to come out to our STEM fair, which is April 26th, I believe I had it listed in here somewhere. But every year we do a STEM fair at Rife then, and we have to highlight some of the best of our technology that's happening in the district for the community to come out and see. We are working on a lot of professional development, obviously, with the use of technology in the classroom. We're doing a lot of modeling and training. Dan and Missy, Dan and his secretary, Missy Dow are out very actively working with teachers, coaching, team teaching, co-teaching, doing workshop sessions, bringing in speakers, working on some of the PD sessions with the professional development committee, taking people out to districts, doing visits. We have teachers who will be going to PUC and C, which is a technology conference in February, so there's a lot of really good stuff happening. And for all of that stuff that's happening, there's a lot of infrastructure stuff happening in the backend. We've been working with Calipular IU to coordinate our E-Rate. E-Rate is a, for all of you who have a phone bill, there's a tax element called Universal Service Fund. That tax that's collected for all telco is put into a fund, and it's a competitive process where our school districts actually do bids and bidding through Peplum to get access to reduce prices. For us, we would get 50% off. So for our switches and wireless projects that we're working on, we have a pool of money that we can then request a 50% reduction through, but it's just there's a lot of hoops for E-Rate. So we've been doing a lot of projects. We're growing our wireless. We replaced our phone system last year, and we're doing a lot of devices. So we're really, you know, as we move forward, we're really making our elementary schools more ready for device and access to technology resources. So, any questions? Jim?
Yeah, so thanks for being here this evening, gentlemen. This thing's turning off because all it does is help. The first question I have is over at Warden.
The only problem with doing that, Jim, is that people in the video can't hear your comments.
Hopefully, if it's got a rain, I'm going to turn it off. It was raining.
Isn't there a volume thing on the side?
Yes.
There is.
I'll try this distance. With regards to Warden Creek, I know because of the construction of the building, we have a lot of concrete, a lot of steel. It prevents signals for cell phones. Is there a way to get some type of, for lack of a better term, immune tower or repeater into there to provide a better signalization experience for people? In case we're emergency, we can somehow be able to have the device operational?
We have a, taking a step back, we have a building amplifier for walkie-talkies, and we've worked with the first responders to make sure that is all compatible. So we do have an amplification for that system. The problem with, from the inception of that building with, you know, solar panels on the roof and low-eed glass and all the things needed for LEED certification, you know, a lot of that protection will actually prevent the penetration of radio waves and light waves, so that's intentional. So what hospitals and other facilities do where they need to have in-building, you know, systems is they actually pay for a separate, it's not a wireless system, but it would be like having that cell carrier amplified internally. So to do that, you have to figure out what vendors you want to be sponsoring in the building, and then you have to amplify each of those frequencies. So Verizon versus Sprint versus AT&amp;T, they all have different channels, different technologies that we would need to address. So if we put an antennas in internally, each carrier, so we did get a quote about, around the time of Warden opened, we did get a quote from a carrier to kind of figure out what the cost would be. And per carrier, it was about $70,000. So it's sort of, that was the, that was why we then just went with the walkie-talkie system and amplified it internally, because that was much lower. They already had walkie-talkies in the previous buildings, you know. Also, you know, there are some other things we could do with, we have some phones that are SIP-based phones that work on the Wi-Fi, but those phones on the Wi-Fi, there's not Wi-Fi in every corner, you know, so there's not Wi-Fi in the bathrooms and the stair towers, you know, some patients, so it's not really as suitable. It's not really a complete solution.
With regards to the walkie-talkies, there's a walkie-talkie in every classroom then?
I believe so. I don't know.
And then with regards to that, are they only going back to a station within the building? What I'm thinking about is if, God forbid, someone took over the main office, and the way they're controlling their signal is they're going to point a walkie-talkie, which is going back to the first responders to control the signal?
We're all licensed, so the channels and frequencies we're using are unique to our walkie-talkies.
And would it go out of the building or would it stay internal to the building?
Someone could probably dial into those frequencies if they were so inclined, but I mean, it is privately licensed and those numbers and frequencies are shared with the first responders. So, you know, I'm sure it's possible. You know, again, I don't know all the logistics on which walkie-talkie systems the building is for.
Thanks.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
I have a question. So I apologize, I was kind of multitasking when you started. Can you repeat again or just sum up what the current PD is on for the one-to-one?
Sure. On the second page, there's sort of a list of some of the things that Dan and Missy have been working on, and really focusing in on Schoology, you know, and a lot of the things around, you know, apps and things that you can do in a classroom, modeling the use of technology to support the 21st century model. So, you know, whiteboard integration is something that they've been doing. That's always an ongoing type of training. Google Apps, digital assessments, you know, there's lots of different tools that folks are using, some free stuff, some free stuff, you know. So that's really the list of some of the classes that we've been offering.
How have you or has the PD committee initiated any professional development on hybrid classes or flipping the classroom or any of those kind of newer innovative?
I think there are a couple of different, we're hitting this from a couple of different approaches, and Sue Miller has been sort of heading up a committee where we're evaluating that blended hybrid online environment, you know, to go along with our blended, our support of cyber school. And so the blended flip stuff is happening sort of as a part, logically, as a part of what's happening with the Schoology training, flipping the classroom, providing resources and doing differentiated, those types of things are things that Dan and Missy are teaching, and I'm sure Julie could answer. Those things are happening, any of the PD that's happening.
I think that the whole idea, the more mass customized learning with that piece coming out, I think we need to be on the cutting edge and making sure we're looking at that, those hybrid blended courses, and making sure our teachers know that it's not, it's not going to remove their job. Like, it's a, those courses are hard to teach.
Yes.
And they require the teachers, and, but they're really what our students, specifically in high school, specifically, I mean, right now I see it more happening in your advanced and honors courses, but I think that, I think actually sometimes the more struggling students need those types of courses and build responsibility. And those courses are, I just think that teachers need to be reassured that those courses are hard to teach, and the students just say, "Oh, today's a hybrid day, I don't have to go," or, you know, whatever it might be, that that's not the case, that those courses are preparing our students more for college and even career readiness, which is where I think we should be focusing on. So I look forward to hearing more about that.
Yeah, I think that when we're talking about customized learning and differentiation and online, I think we're really trying to meet the students to flexible, you know, be more flexible, not, you know, switching to a model where, you know, we don't need to be here. I think all the things that we're working on really just excel and help what's going on in traditional classrooms, we're really moving forward.
Right. Well, it gives that more open campus feel, and so students in that course could be in the library for a study, you know, study, or, you know, maybe if they're working on a group project or something like that. I would love to see more students utilizing the library and common spaces where they meet up and work together on things, so.
Absolutely.
Anyway, that's just kind of my vision with technology. And I think if we're utilizing one-to-one, we really need to be doing it to the best of our ability, and I think Exter's doing a really good job with that. My other question for you is more kind of coming from a parent standpoint. I love Schoology. I mean, I think it's a great program. I'm not as familiar with it as like Google, which is free. And I still struggle with the fact that we have Skyward and Schoology and Google, and teachers can choose what they want to use in their classroom, from my understanding. Maybe, again, I may be wrong.
Well, ultimately, when it comes down to this, Skyward is our keystone application. So it is, the whole district is supported by what's in Skyward. So Skyward is our grade book.
Right.
That's where grades are, that's where grading is, that's where GPA, TPA, all of those types are.
Correct. And so everyone is held to that standard that you need to have your grades posted in Skyward.
Correct.
However, and most teachers did, you know, when I, when I would look at grades, however, some teachers then would also be utilizing Schoology with the assignments and grades. So I was having the Schoology and the Skyward app and the Google app, and I was going back and forth, back and forth. I think that we need to streamline, here's the expectation, if any teachers can use any other apps or programs to their desire, you know, based on their course, but I think that there needs to be a streamline for parents and the community to say, here's where we go to look for assignments and grades.
I agree. And, I mean, this is something that we're
Worked past for this year, or do you think that that's going to be pretty standard with what numbers you had worked in for the budget?
The collection, well, the percentage is pretty consistent, uh, year to year. Some areas where, um, we will be ahead. It's not reflected in December's numbers, but the collection rate for your state tax, and you see later on the agenda, Exeter Township is ninety-eight percent versus ninety-seven point six percent from last year. So, that's an improvement. And I'll present more detail of the estimate when we get into future budget presentations. Uh, we're also a little ahead in our Act five eleven taxes, which is our, which is our earned income tax, which has probably about forty-eight thousand. Um, so it is, other areas are approximately the same. We are getting a little more basic at subsidy, the state level. Obviously, our reimbursement from the state for retirement is greater because retirement expense is greater.
Yeah.
So, but all other areas generally, yeah, we are on, are the prior year.
Um, and then the same question for our expenditures. Currently, we're at forty percent roughly, um, with a little bit of change on top. Uh, of all of our expenses being spent according to our budget. Do you think that that's pretty consistent with years past? Or are we looking at something that may be a little bit under budget from our anticipated spending?
At this point, well, what I can tell you what differs from last year definitely is that at this point, last year, we did not have a support contract settled. So, the status quo, they're being paid at their prior year rates. Uh, but the, this money, core increases in the budget. So, until we settle and they got paid their retro in March, you know, that expense was on the books beyond, uh, compared to this year. Obviously, the wages are greater this year than they were last year. Um, benefits are greater than they were last year. Uh, and generally, um, in the school districts, you know, the budget plan, uh, the spending occurs during the summer, the supplies, equipment. There may be variations in when we actually roll out, uh, some technology. We try to get it through the summer.
Uh huh.
Uh, but some things may occur a little later. But overall, do I see, um, any great variances? Um, you know, with the timing of some facility projects, there may be less spent in that facility year because it may flow over into next year. That's more than.
In twenty eighteen, nineteen, or just this?
Into eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
You know, in the general fund, we budgeted, say, six hundred twenty thousand of facility projects. But some of our projects, because of the timing, will occur after the last student day. So,
Okay.
We may accrue some of those costs in, but, you know, we may roll that into the following year. Um, but really, at this point, uh, it's hard to say what's going to happen with tuition, outside placement tuition. Um, our charter school is actually right now trending a little bit above budget. Uh, over, you know, for the year, about forty thousand. But that changes. The number, you know, those kids are, they enroll, they disenroll, and the same with our private placements. They're, um, we just don't, uh, take it, you know, to the last quarter.
Um, maybe this is just kind of a tools of the trade question, but do you see that there are any months where we have, it, it, not larger than normal, but those months are when we spend more money because they're kind of the touch point for different transitions that are going on. Like, in March, are we going to have seen numbers that are going to be much larger than any other month, for example? Just because there are more things going on in that month? Or are they all pretty consistent?
Uh, the months where you'll see a significant spike is if you have three pays in one month. But I think that could attest to the fact that what she's looking at as treasurer in July, August, September, October, is a lot spent.
Okay.
Because we're paying for local purchases.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
And I wanted to ask you about the scholarship funds. Um, I see we have like fifty-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Does, does anybody ever use them? Or how would they go? And how is the school district going about doing the scholarships on the Asian program?
The, uh, senior high, uh, administration and guidance, uh, they, as a group, decide, uh, which scholarships should we order on an annual basis. We, the district is, uh, it's an agency fund, you know, it's a trust. Uh, but they dictate how much and who. And actually, some of the sponsors of the scholarships will dictate how much they want to allocate. Um, in recent years, we've had, uh, funds have built up because of some, um, significant donations that have been made for certain scholarships.
Okay, so, um, so who's in charge of doing this? As if, as if the people that have the scholarship fund that decide, like, if they're going to give a scholarship away in, in, in June to a certain student, or, or is this kind of?
For example, I think there's one with the Kennedy family. They donated in memory of their mother. Um, I don't know, it just went off the top of my head. And the, the children will let the senior hall know, this is how much we'd like you to distribute, um, this year.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next section of the agenda that has to do with board policy, we'll be, uh, looking at second reading for six policies, um, which means that they're up for final approval. Um, these are policies that we've looked at considerably over the past, um, two months, uh, been examined by our board, our attorney, our, our administrators, um, under our second reading. They would include a policy on immunization, one on H I V infection, a policy on attendance, uh, post graduate, postgraduate students, uh, assignment within the district, and confidential communications of students. Um, so I, I move that we approve these six policies for, for the second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Continuing policies, we've got six additional policies that will be up, that are up now for first reading. Um, just going to go a little bit in detail with these. Um, policy two oh eight, which is withdrawal from school, which is a current policy that we have, which only has a few minor changes to it. Uh, two oh nine, uh, health exam, uh, screenings. Um, there's been some significant change to this to kind of include additional notices, um, some special, um, language in regard to screenings, health records. Um, also, uh, results of examinations and notifications, um, about examinations and screenings, including the school code. So, most of these are updates relative to school code language for, uh, policy two oh nine. Policy two oh nine point one is a brand new policy. It has to do with food allergy management, which is embedded with, um, several additional, um, uh, recommendations and requirements associated with five oh four, IDDA, and, uh, school health, uh, plans and, and emergency plans for children who may have significant food allergies that require maintenance throughout the school day. Uh, policy two ten is medications. Um, this is one where minor language updates were made for additional clarity. Um, and so not, but not anything significant. That is an existing policy. Um, policy two ten point one, which is position, possession of asthma inhalers and, and Epi, Epi pens and injectors. Um, this is also a new policy. It's become more common for students to, um, to require, possess these during the school day and, and certain requirements are in place, um, and, you know, in the code that require us to kind of put a policy in place about possession of students during the school day of these, uh, of these very necessary, uh, medical devices. Uh, policy two eleven is student accident insurance. Um, and this is where PSBA has added, uh, language recommending, recommending insurance, uh, coverage for students in designated activities based upon line of recommendations. Um, so those are the, those are the, uh, six new, um, policies we'll be looking at, uh, be looking at this month and be looking at for second reading in February. And I, I move that we approve these for first reading.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Business functions. Mr. Gell.
Thank you, Dr. Dan Berger. It is recommended that the board of school directors award a bid for four buses to Wolfington Body Company, the lowest bidder meeting specs. The total cost of the three new seventy-seven passenger international buses is two hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred seven dollars. Trade value for three buses, model year is two thousand oh four oh five, is twelve thousand one hundred fifty. Total cost of one new fifty-four passenger international bus is seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine to trade value for one two thousand three bus is three thousand one hundred seventy-five. Net cost of the lowest bid meeting specifications is three hundred sixteen thousand six hundred fifteen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Um, what do you mean by international bus? Is that you mean the, you know, like the, out of whatever country or something?
That's the company's name.
Oh, it's, oh, please, please, sorry. What is an international bus?
It has to be a tariff on it.
I'm sorry?
We have to pay a tariff on it.
Hold on, man. That has been passed ahead.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I'm sure, I'm on, uh, no. What, what is it? Do you want to?
This is the no.
No, 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 it's out.
We have four noes and five ayes, ayes, so on the ayes, have it. Motion carries. Mr. Gell.
Exemption decisions by the Burks County Assessment Appeals Board resolved that the board of school directors of Exeter Township School District authorizes intervention in the appeal of the Burks County Court of Common Pleas regarding the exemption decisions by the Burks County Assessment Appeals Board on six properties owned by Calhoun House and parcel numbers listed. Be further resolved with the board directed solicitor suite Stevens, Katz, Williams, and its administration and officers to take all action necessary to protect the district's interests in the appeal.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended that the board of school directors approves the submission to the Burks County Tax Claim Office the two thousand seventeen St. Lawrence Borough School real estate taxes declared delinquent in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred dollars thirty-seven cents. Collection rate was ninety-eight point seven five percent last year's amount, fifty-six thousand eight hundred one dollars thirty-two cents, ninety-seven point six four percent collection.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say, uh, thank you to the, uh, St. Lawrence Borough Tax Squadron. You did a great job of, um, reducing the, you know, the, uh, amount of delinquing tax that we had to take, you know, someplace else. So, they're, they're doing a fantastic job.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Submission of two thousand seventeen Exeter Township School real estate taxes declared delinquent. Recommended the board of school directors approve the submission to the Burks County Tax Claim Office two thousand seventeen Exeter Township School real estate taxes declared delinquent in the amount of eight hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars ninety-two cents. Collection rate was ninety-eight percent last year's amount, nine hundred eighty-one thousand twenty-two dollars sixty-three cents, ninety-seven point six percent collection.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Once again, our tax squadron also has reduced the amount of delinquing taxes that had to be submitted to, uh, another agency.
I thank Mr. Uh, Dan.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Adopt opt-out resolution for some of section three eleven D one. It's recommended that the board of school directors adopt the opt-out resolution for some of the section three eleven D one of Act one stating that the Exeter Township School District will not raise the rate of any tax for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen by more than the Act one index. The Act one index for fiscal year eighteen nineteen is three point one percent.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached resolution opposing Senate Bill two and any other legislation or any effort by the General Assembly to implement tuition vouchers or any other program that would have an effect of a tuition voucher program, and conveying the importance of supporting and improving the quality of all public schools in the community. Background efforts that began in the Senate Education Committee last fall to pass legislation to establish education savings accounts for students used at private schools or with private vendors are expected to pick up again very soon. Bill is likely to be scheduled for action and approved by the Senate Education Committee quickly. It's moving the issue to a larger debate in the Senate, possibly the House.
Second. Second.
Give a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm, uh,
Mr.?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, David. I'm going to be voting against this resolution because it's my belief that the taxpayer owns the money that goes to his child in his name. This is merely giving the taxpayers value for their dollar. And for that reason, vouchers should be deployed.
Jerry, I'd like to ask you a question. I value a lot of, I value all of everyone's knowledge and I am curious about some of where our members stand on this. Do you worry that it will increase school taxes if we're taking that money and putting it into the education savings accounts? That now we have a hole where this money's not going into public education and we're going to have to get more money?
Again, my position is that the money belongs to the child, not to the district.
My counter to that theory is that we, as a community, are responsible for the education of all of our children who live here, regardless of whether we have 10 children or zero children, our children are grown or our children aren't here yet. I think that a parent's choice to put their child into a private education system is just that. It is a personal choice and I endorse it. I'm glad they want to do that. My parents had me in Porroville School when I was a child. It was a great experience. At the same time, I think that the education that we provide is excellent also. I think that is a personal choice by every family, aside how they're going to spend their money. I don't think you can equilaterally take money out of the system, dollar per dollar, like a child, and therefore reduce the cost of the school district is going to incur. If we have 10 children removed from our school district, if we would be one of those schools in the future that would have in the system, it's not, for instance, that we're going to be removing 10 teachers or one teacher. If we had 20 students removed, it's not like we're going to remove one teacher. We're still going to incur costs every year for that teacher because those students will be dispersed amongst many classrooms. So therefore, I think any disruption of a system and erosion of the possible funds that we need to maintain our operation is counter to anything we want to do to provide for the best, highest quality education for our child in our Exeter Township School District. Thank you.
I'll just fall back on that the money belongs to the child and the parent. The parent pays it. The money goes to the child. So I, I mean, I can't make it any clearer than that.
I found in my research, in preparation for voting on this bill, that there already are scholarships and grants that students can receive to attend parochial schools or private schools. And personally, I did research on the index of, not the index, it's something I must say, on the score of public schools versus the private schools. And this bill addresses only if school, public schools that are performing lower than 18%, correct? Something like that. Maybe I'm saying this wrong, but I don't have the information. I didn't write it down.
Yeah, right, it's 15, 15 cents.
Okay, bottom, the bottom, the performing schools, correct? Exeter doesn't fall into this category, thank goodness. Some of our local community schools do, and, or surrounding school districts, if I'm correct, from my research. And what I found concerning, and I never looked at this, that the record card from the state for private and parochial schools, those schools are performing terribly. Those scores are low, like super low, and I was shocked when I saw that. You know, it's one thing to say, oh, I want to send my kid to a private school because I don't like the public school or they're not doing well, but those students are struggling worse than public schools. And, you know, I kinda, I went back and forth and I still, you know, but I think anytime we're taking money away from public education, we're doing a disservice to our students, our teachers, and specifically schools that are struggling. We need to be supporting them and helping them. And I think that the already programs and initiatives in place for parents who would like to send their child to private and, you know, private schools outside of the public school. And I understand that because, you know, I have, I see that being an issue for some students who just don't fit into public school. I get that, you know, or religious purposes or, you know, feelings, but I, I just, I'm concerned with taking money away from public education. That's what I support and I, I think it's going to dig a deeper hole. I agree that it's the taxpayers' money, it's the students' money, but I feel like we're just, we're taking money away, so we're, we are responsible for the taxpayers' money. I don't, I don't want to tell, I don't want to say, yeah, this belongs to you when the research shows that only 3% of the states that are already doing this, only 3% are using this program. So, and then if you have read, any money that is not used in the savings accounts, if it's not used even after high school, it goes into the state's general fund. So, yeah, that's good for the state, right? But I'm concerned that...
That'd be more money for public education. That was a joke.
It could. No, no, yeah, well. I just worry we're finally starting to see the state grow back out of all the mistakes they made in public education, which the boards and public education is being blamed for, are finally growing out of that and now we're going to take money away again? You know, I just feel like it's a vicious cycle and anytime we're taking money away from public education, I go weak. Is this okay? And I see both sides, I truly do, but I worry, and, and I really worry that we're going to say, this is for the taxpayers, this bill should go, or should not be approved, or it should be, sorry, should be, should go through or whatever, we should support it, but I worry it's going to create a deeper hole for our taxpayers in the long run. Because just like Jim said, any money that's going out now, we're still going to need to build our school. We're still going, we still are going to have 97% of our students that didn't utilize this, that we still have to make sure they're doing their best, are achieving and progressing, and those schools that specifically need it, you know, those struggling schools really need that money. So, sorry I wasn't very articulate, but my biggest concern, to sum it up, is that if we're taking money away from public education, we're going to still need it. So we're going to have to raise taxes and I don't want to see that happen.
Well, what other decisions do you want to make for those parents? If you're making the decision that they can't use their tax money to send their kid to a parochial school or private school of their choice, what other decisions do we make? What car they drive? I mean, you know, let's give them value for their tax dollars, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the decision would be for the parents to potentially not live in a district where they're unhappy with the public school. If it's a religious purpose, then they, there are, I specifically wanted to see that are there programs out there that can help parents financially? And there are. They have to initiate those, just like they have to initiate to get a voucher or to get involved in the ESA. And that, again, only 3% are taking advantage, I don't always say taking advantage, but are utilizing it and potentially taking advantage of it. Now the state's holding the money versus the school district. So, again, who do we, who do we trust in that circumstance? I trust the school district. I trust, you know, we, schools want to do the best for their students and utilize the money appropriately and effectively.
Don't parents want to do the best for their student?
Absolutely.
For any other, any other discussions on topic, concerns?
I just wanted to add that I'll be voting against the resolution as well for a number of reasons. I think really the core question at the heart of this debate is, are public schools the best place for students to be in nearly all situations? Or could it be more than just a small minority that is successful outside of a public school? And I believe that it's the latter of those options. Public school was the best option for me. It'll likely be the best option for my kids. It is one that my whole family has utilized. And I don't mean to discourage anybody from thinking that public schools are an excellent place because while they're the option that everybody has to take at a minimum, if they're not going to go above that, they are a great option at the minimum. And they're often a better option than other alternatives that are out there. But I think really here, it's really up to the parents to have the liberty, and I think that this is what really puts me over top, is that the parents should have the liberty to choose where they are going to send their kids. And I totally understand moving out of the district or moving to a different district in situations where you're able to do so, but not all families are able to do so. There are a number of excellent examples of charter schools, not only parochial, in cities like Philadelphia or Pittsburgh. And while it's easy to say that there are a number of examples where there aren't excellent charter schools, and I don't disagree with that at all, it doesn't mean that everyone is bad. And it may mean that one is just one bit better than a public school option is for one family. And I think that this is really what this is cutting at. It's not cutting at every single kid in the Reading School District or the Chester School District or the Philadelphia School District will leave. It's counting at the kids at the margins who are going to be able to have one bit more opportunity because of the funding that they're going to receive from the state subsidy to be able to choose where they go. In addition, this is not the bill I would have written. I definitely have disagreements and edits that I would want to make, but that's not our role. And I would add that I think the state should really look at some of the other areas that public schools are really being hurt, especially with our large regulatory burden that seems to be added to every single year. And I think that this really is a marginal issue and there are a lot of reasons why I think that it really could hurt some public schools. But at the end of the day, this isn't about the public schools. This is about the students who currently go there and may want to go somewhere else. And I really think that that is what's at key here. There's not going to be less money spent on public education in Pennsylvania because of this. It's that the money will follow students where their parents and they decide that they would like to go. And I don't want to dispute at all the point, which I think should be made as a given, that this might and probably will result in less money being in public schools. And while I think that that would be hard to grapple with, not only for teachers, staff, and administrators, but also for the school board members that have to define the budget, I just can't get over the fact that this is really about the personal liberty of parents to choose where they're going to send their kids. With that, I respect the comments and conclusions of my colleagues and I will close the resolution.
Hunter, I feel like you kind of talked in a circle, but, you know, I appreciate your thoughts and you were very thorough. You just basically said that public schools are going to lose money. I mean, that's our job is to make sure our public school is performing and is, has the money we need to effectively educate all students. And I, as an educator in public school, I see every day teachers, administrators, going, bending over backwards to make sure students are successful. One student in class of 30, making sure that student's successful, that the program, that the curriculum, that the assessments are meeting their needs. And if there's any place a parent can go to make sure that their child is getting a good education, it's in public schools. Because, thank you. I just, I feel passionate about that and I, not just because I'm an educator and I do that for my students, but, you know, oftentimes we say, our student's not doing well, let's move them. Talking to your superintendent or our people services, those people are amazing at accommodating for those students and do it every single day for so many students to make sure that those students are successful. Maybe getting that word out to parents saying, hey, your child isn't being super successful right now. What can we do to help? What do you need? And our public schools are doing that. So, I mean, we're talking about our taxpayers, it's their money, and I get that. I totally do and I totally agree that some students are not, don't fit the mold. But public schools are not molding, you know, there's so many various molds to help them. But this is about, like you said, the parents and their choice. And there's options for them. There are. There's so many options. And if we start to take, if anybody that's taking money away from public schools or this program, this bill, taking money away from public school, all we're going to have to do is get it back somehow, somehow to raise taxes.
Well, I think that would be the responsibility of the board to make the decision that they need to fit the services to the amount of students. And if this really does affect a large amount of students, that it changes the entire business model of public education, I think that that would be who, a school board, to realize that they need to change their business model along with that. Because pretending that we can just continue on the path that we have, if we cut our enrollment by 25%, I think is ludicrous. And I think that's part of the reason that there are so many problems in a lot of urban school districts because they have the structure that was able to support it and because of internal struggles, they were not able to cut back and charter their level of services to what needed to occur. I mean, look at the city of Detroit. That's the exact reason that they went bankrupt. And they had so many continuing costs for a system that just wasn't sustainable for many years. Now, I don't think that that's going to happen in the majority of the situations. And I don't want that to happen in the majority of situations, or in any situation. But I think the reality here is that this is a marginal issue that will give more parents just one more option in their toolbox. And this is a sizable amount of subsidy that would follow their student. And I think really where my opinion really rests and sets is that the sun does not set on education only in a public school. The sun sets on education for a student. And wherever the parent and the student feels that that's best served is really their option. And I think that this is just one more tool for them to be able to use to decide where that is best served.
And while I agree with you, Hunter, that the sun doesn't set on that, the sun doesn't shine on it either. And, you know, my concern is I think it's absurd that our state government continues to craft legislation that gives private business owners dollars without requiring public accountability.
I'd like to say that I vehemently oppose this new business item. Everyone sitting in this here that is a board member took an oath to give a thorough and efficient education to all public schools, the public schools. We are not supposed to be supporting private education. I went to private schools when I was a child. I went to religious schools. My parents sent us, anybody to, if I had paid something, we paid it. That was our choice. This business that a parent has the choice to send their child wherever they want and the public schools should be defunded because of that, I think is nonsense. We are about public education, period. That's why I became a school board member. I believe thoroughly in public education, even though I myself was not a product of public education. I certainly went to public college for my degrees, but I didn't attend public schools because it was my parents' choice to do what they wanted and they paid for it. So, your choice in education, if you want that choice, you pay for it. I think public dollars should go to public schools and that's what I will always support and I will be against anything that takes away from it.
If you're speaking to choice, for what choice does the homeowner have when he has a gun that he's had to pay taxes?
Jerry, this is what the democracy...
No, I'm dead serious.
I'm, I'm, I'm serious. This is what democracy is all about. This is the common good. That's why we have public education. Years ago, way before we had public education, the only people that could go to schools were people with money. But now we have, and thank goodness we do have a public education because now the poor can go there, they can get a good education. The rich can go there, they can get a good education. I don't think anybody, if anybody in this audience or any parent wants to come in and look at the schools, I go in every week, I'll tell you what. There's great things going on in this school district. I taught Reading for years. There were great things going on there too. Some people might say that's, that's, you know, a failing district. It isn't. It isn't. You know, charter schools or any of those private schools, you're giving public dollars with no accountability. I believe in accountability. There's no, when, when, when somebody takes money and goes to a private school with public tax dollars, do you ever get in there to see what they're doing? No. You don't even see their test score. You see nothing. There's no accountability. They take the money and run. So, do you think every parent knows what's good for their child?
Yes.
No, there doesn't. Don't you see how many people just hurt their children and do things? Not every parent is a good parent.
Now, you make a motion and call the question.
Motion. Does anybody object to the calling question? Okay, some call and question. All in favor of this motion for the resolution against Senate Bill 2, say. With favor of the resolution, say aye. Who's opposed?
No.
No?
No, you're saying... You're in, you're in, you're in, you're in.
I'm not in favor of Senate Bill 2.
Opposed.
I oppose, yeah.
Yeah, you're in.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, yeah, I oppose.
Yeah, the motion is in favor of the resolution.
Because, resolution opposing.
Okay, got it.
So I, I heard 2 opposed and 7 for. So the motion carries. Thanks for the comment. Thanks for your, thanks for exchanging ideas.
Budget transfers. It's recommended that the board of school directors approve budget transfers for the month of December 2017. The amount of $67,000, I'm sorry.
Forgot the one about PSBA.
It's recommended that the board of school directors approve a service agreement, PSBA, to hold a customized workshop with the board of school directors on February 24, 2018. Costs $600 regarding... two thousand eighteen, cost of six hundred dollars regarding the roles and responsibilities of school.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention one thing. I know that PSBA likes to talk about us as a team of ten. I'd like us to think about being the equivalent eleven, and that is that we always include the taxpayer in any discussion that we have.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve budget transfers for the month of December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand thirty-one dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Dr. Henry, there were four no votes on the bus purchase item, and it was my fault that I did not say anything about why I voted no for that, but I was wondering if I could just take a really quick opportunity to kind of justify that. I know Mr. Wegman is here. My perspective on that was really this, is that we don't know what the future of our transportation program is going to be. This is a multi-thousand-dollar expenditure. I'm sure I could have found a bigger number than that. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-dollar expenditure for a program that we're not sure what we want to do with in the future. On top of that, the loss on investment that we would lose from not purchasing new buses, I do not believe weighs with the costs that they have incurred, especially not knowing what the future of our program is. Board's ultimate decision is to maintain our fleet and our service level, then I would have certainly voted for it, but I just don't believe that we're at a position to make that determination yet, and therefore, that's why I voted against it.
Okay, thank you. Personnel committee, Mr. Trevino.
Personnel committee, we have resignations under extracurricular activities and sports. It's recommended the Board of Directors approves or ratifies those resignations. I won't read them all.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have three retirements. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following retirements. I won't go through all those either. Mr. Kane is not here, is he?
No. Yeah, I was just gonna- Hello? Sorry, I got a big mouth there. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Kane, I don't believe he's here tonight. I believe it's twelve years of service to the district as our principal, and I know he'll be here until July thirty-first. He specifically picked that time so he would ensure that the schedule would be in place, and he would make sure that the next year would happen seamlessly. So, it's appreciative that he would do that, and it just goes to show you, I believe, that he really cares about not only the district, but his building. So, you know, he will be missed, and I just wanted to make sure that was recognized, it's okay.
I just want to add to that really quick and say that I have the unique opportunity of Mr. Kane being the only, well, I'm the only person on the board who had Mr. Kane as a principal, probably the only person ever on the board in that similar situation. But I just want to say that Mr. Kane was an excellent building principal, and normally you see your building principal as somebody that you're afraid to be talking to, and he was definitely not that, and he did an excellent job on many occasions that I was able to personally see his leadership come out, not only towards the students, but also towards staff as well. So, I just want to say that about him.
Yeah, I also like to say I've known Bill Kane since a childhood. He and I went to school together in Downey Town, graduated from the same year, and I've known Bill to be the same person he is today as he was back then, one of the most sincere, genuine, caring, gentle people that I know. And I think he's been a great principal, he's also a great human being. I'm glad he lives in the community, and I look forward to seeing him beyond his employment, but I wish him well. He's provided us many years of great service, and look forward to seeing his face in the audience again in the future. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, now we move on to appointments. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. I don't know if anybody wants me to break anything out here, I would like to acknowledge the appointment of Dr. Patrick Winters as the Assistant Superintendent. He offered you the floor for a minute if there's anything you want to say.
Thank you so much again for the opportunity.
Oh, we haven't approved your contract yet. Somehow they separated on this end of year, but please, I assure you-
No, it's absolutely fantastic to be here. Today was my first day, I had an amazing first day, great meeting people. In the next couple of weeks, I'm going to get out to all five buildings, sit down with the principals, get into classrooms, see some of the great stuff that Ms. Peja was talking about, and so I look forward to that opportunity, but I feel very privileged to be able to be here, and it's very exciting now to be official. Hopefully, in the next couple of minutes, all that is approved, and thanks to all of you for your support of me and for the outstanding contract. I'm very, very honored that you're putting your trust in me in this capacity, so thank you.
Welcome, and I understand you had an opportunity with Jasmine as the head of curriculum tonight, and I have asked Dr. Phillips, does the board have an opportunity with you as well, so just, you know, over the period of time.
I heard Dr. Phillips is seeing us all to dinner.
To Moses.
Pat's fitting the bill, he's just a credit worker, there's always extra money, Pat.
I'll have to sell one of my furs, darling. You should anyway. Oh, man, I wish it all blown here. I like your fur.
So, we have administrative staff, certificated staff, support staff, certificated substitutes, support substitutes. I'd like to read all those names, if you want to make a motion on those first.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
I want to say that this is no reflection on Dr. Winters. He's going to do a great job, I'm sure of it, he seems like a sweetheart to me. But I think that, I think that the contract was just far too extravagant, and-
We're not, we're not on that issue yet.
We're not.
This is a point that he started today, it's just an amendment of his effective date. We'll get to him.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following leaves of absence for support staff and food service staff.
Second.
Have a certificate. Okay.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll go through these individually now. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following requests for change of status, certificated staff, temporary professional to professional status, for the following teachers who have completed three years of satisfactory service in the school district. She'll are Erga and Emily and Seberger.
Yeah, can we just say congratulations to them as well?
They're not here, we typically do bring them along.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Substitute aid and substitute secretary rate is recommended the Board of School Directors approve an increase in the hourly rate for substitute aides and substitute secretaries to be eleven dollars an hour.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question that's not only this, but it is related to rates for substitutes. It's only a question because I know you've had some challenges in team substitutes for our classrooms. Are our rates currently competitive with all the other school districts in the area? When I bring this up, it's a small drive down on four-twenty-two the other afternoon, I saw a billboard advising the running school district to substitute.
We are competitively rate-wise, we are in the same vote as everyone else, there's no one out there. We're trying.
Now, we're at contract approvals, recommended the Board of School Directors approves the assistant-
No, we didn't vote yet.
We didn't vote.
Was there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Contract approval, Assistant Superintendent is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the Assistant Superintendent's contract.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, again.
Sweetheart.
Okay, baby. I have to be an advocate for the taxpayer, and I would like to see it pared back a little bit, but the vote is going to be with the board's.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that the contract as created was reflective of the previous contract that the previous superintendent was under, and contains the same arrangements as most other leadership positions in the district have.
I'd like to add one too. What Mike said is that we also compare our salaries against those that are comparable, comparable salaries inside the county area, so it's a standardized market, and I believe that what we're looking at is a compensation package for Dr. Winters is something we want to give to anyone we feel is highly qualified, we want to have on board with us, because we're looking for people who can bring our school district to a level it is and keep growing, and I think that's why we're looking at where we're at right now.
I certainly support the compensation that we are going to be giving Dr. Winters. I think it's commensurate with his degrees, and you know, I don't think we should ever try to be on the cheap, because then what happens is that someone will move on very quickly to another position.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors appoint Anne Seigaidish to a three-year contract effective July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, as business manager contingent upon terms and conditions specified in a properly executed mutual agreement.
Second. Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
Anne's awesome.
I certainly support Anne, she is a fantastic business manager. Whenever I talk with her on any thing, she has the facts right there, and I certainly enjoy working with you and your staff.
Thank you.
And I will enjoy working with her and negotiating our contract.
Why don't we welcome May?
Who's that translator?
No, I think we all hold Anne in very high esteem. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the taxless, of course, requests.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, one point, Alveria is a university that- Alveria is a university, not a college, it's a college, it's a big, large one.
That modification and consideration, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the staff conferences.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Google one in the agenda to student functions, Mrs. Rapp.
It is reported that the eleven field trips below within a sixty-mile radius have been approved, and it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the field trips below beyond a sixty-mile radius. There's two A's there.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question for Dr. Phillips, who may or may not be able to answer, but for number nine under field trips within sixty-mile radius, senior high AP students traveling to the admin building, is there any reason that they're not able to take that exam in the LGI? Because if they could, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me as to why they would be bused over here.
Mr. Kane isn't here to answer that.
Okay.
They've been doing it this way for years, and I believe they have a standard reason why they're done. But we did find that out.
All right, I appreciate that, because it'll be, I think, definitely pertinent with the wrestling program being in there too, to kind of have an idea of when they'll need to either roll up their bets, or if we can make accommodations elsewhere. Well, I know, but this will be for next year, when the wrestling program is in there, not this year.
Well, I know, the dates are promised by the state, we will have those dates where they bet.
Okay.
Any additional discussion on item nine B?
Do we know how many students are going to France?
We were not provided that.
Okay, just curious.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors adopts two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar and improves the in-service days on October eighth, two thousand eighteen, and January twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, as Act eighty days.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, one aspect of the calendar that gives me just a little bit of concern is the week of vacations during the Easter holiday that will be the first days that we use for snow makeup, and what will often happen in cases like that is that parents, unfortunately, get the wrong message and make plans for travel during that extended period of time, and it would be a great opportunity to travel, obviously, but more than likely, those days are going to disappear as a result of snow days and snow makeup. So, one of the dilemmas that school districts face is how do you handle situations where parents plead to be able to have their child released from school when there's really no justification for travel, or that time and the needs of high schools from school. So, I think we need to monitor that and make sure that we make sure, make sure that we alert our families that this is not, these are dates that are likely to be taken by snow makeup, and not to plan on extensive trips when that occurs.
See, I would turn that around and say there's only certain times when families can do something in the middle of the year, and a lot of times you're making travel plans, it's typically four to six months ahead of time for something like that, and it might be a trip, it's not like they're going to grandma's house or something like that. I think that if anything, we may want to consider the location of our snow makeup days to some other time in the schedule.
Well, that was the kind of point that I made when I first reacted to this, and I've been assured that, you know, we're going to notify the families that-
There was notifications I went and-
This is the case.
Last last staff.
Yeah, and I think we have to be careful and monitor that, but I mean, there are ramifications for, you know, families who may choose to take that time away regardless, and you know, those are set by policy and by school code, and I think we have to really make sure they're grounded to a degree.
Well, the other option would be to have the days at the end, and we're in that position right now, and parents are already letting me know that they have their trips scheduled at the end of the year, and they hope there'll be no more snow days. So, it's a fifty-fifty, either way, what we do, we're going to-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a new, it's a new model for us, it's a new concept, other districts do it, and I know some other districts have done it in the past, you know, do it at the end of your makeup, as you're suggesting, right, so it's just something that might continue to work out.
It's like, I have another question. If there are more than four days, would they go then into the end of the year? Okay. And I'm a district, I work in a district where we take them in now in the middle of the year, and they're supposed to both, really, so, you know.
Well, a number of years ago, we ran against the problem where we had so many snow and ice days, and we were closed beyond where we thought we were, and we just started looking at where was the calendar, and there was an agreement made with the state that X days would count or whatever, and you may recall better than I do.
Yeah, well, that's the act that you did, so we're building some of those in too, but it really boils down to where do we put the snow days? We can put them in at break time and try to save you, June seventh is our graduation, so you can fly out June eighth, or we tell you, yeah, you can take those couple days, you know, for break. Graduating maybe, or we'll graduate on the seventh, but we may have school on the tenth, or the eleventh, or the twelfth, or the thirteenth. It's really not gonna please anybody. It's gonna please half the group. So we're, we're trying something to try and even it out.
So when they graduate, so we get the school hands. That way that week could be a whole way ahead of us.
And basically-
No, we're trying to-
Senior's not-
That's how we got it back in the day.
Senior's hopefully too happy about that.
I thought Phillips, isn't it, am I correct in saying that, um, the seniors have to put in so many days of school? Cause then, you know, when we extend to the end of the year, um, sometimes our seniors are done sooner.
Yes.
But they have to do so many days or we just spend it.
And we had that problem here too.
Correct, right. So that's also an issue.
Yes.
Um, yeah.
It's, it's a drug away act to kind of come here.
Right. Well, and when you're off for those sort of days in the middle of the year, it doesn't feel so bad to take them away like a couple of months later versus like you're at the end in July, then June. Trust me, like when Exeter is getting out and I'm still working, I wish we were to take it somewhere break soon. So again, there's pros and cons, I think, to both.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following dates as Act eighty days for professional development in the 2017-2018 school year. As previously stated, Monday, October ninth, 2017 and Monday, January fifteenth, 2018.
Is that the date here?
I'm sorry, those are different dates.
These are days that we're applying for as Act eighty D's as well. Give us a little more flexibility.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an addendum to the Contract for Services Agreement between Pediatric Therapeutic Services and Exeter Township District to include bilingual services at a cost of eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents an hour.
Second. Any discussion?
Um, I'm gonna be abstaining from the vote because I currently work for Pediatric Therapeutic Services.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Um, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves and accepts the agreement regarding waiver of expulsion hearing and stipulation for student number one eight zero seven eight nine.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. When this student is expelled, will they be going to-
They will not be expelled. There's, there's a waiver of expulsion.
Okay.
That was what waivers all about.
To, to alter the expulsion there. Are they going to alter the-
Yes.
And what's the cost expected for that?
Where are we sitting? In the high school. High, the high school's not here, is it?
No, River Rock.
Oh, it is at River Rock. So whatever the cost for River Rock placement, it certainly is. He's there. He or she will be there too.
I think he'll probably end up filling one of our slots that we have.
No, we have three base slots.
Twelve three base slots.
Um, at some point, could you just email us about how this process works? I don't know if it's necessary for you to explain it, but I, I'm definitely confused about how this is supposed to work. So if you could either email that or explain it now if you feel it's pertinent.
I'd rather be doing it. I don't wanna cross any lines.
Okay.
Break up the chat.
Yeah.
I think you just asked me for the process, but how, how-
Well, a student writes a law which would bring him to expulsion.
How does it work from that point?
We would offer, we would sit down and offer a waiver. Rather than go to expulsion, you would take the placement. And there are some other things that you would forego for that process if you would accept the waiver. And when it's signed off by the parent, the student would go to that placement, whichever it may be. And then rather than going through the, the expense and the legalities of a waiver, excuse me, an expulsion hearing, both parties agree to accept. What do you agree about?
If they were expelled by the board, are we responsible to pay for wherever they would bend out? Is that always that way?
Yes.
It really was. That is probably one of the most ridiculous things that I have ever heard.
Maybe, maybe we should talk to our senators and our House of Representatives.
Hey, I know him personally. Where are you at?
I'll have to talk to him.
Name's Robert.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, committee reports. We'll start it out with the Athletic Committee, Mr. Aaron.
So I have a couple- I have a couple of items, uh, that time passed on to me. Um, some reports about how our teams are doing. Uh, the boys' basketball team is having a good season so far. Um, they're actually playing Wilson this evening. Uh, let me see if it says where they're at.
Paul?
In the fourth, at the beginning of the fourth quarter, they were leading forty-eight to forty-three against Wilson. Um, we have beaten so far Governor Mifflin as well. And, um, they're doing pretty well and they, they have ten wins and four losses and that'll change tonight depending on whether they win or lose. Uh, the Athletic Hall of Fame night is on Friday, January twenty-sixth, where we'll be inducting, uh, three boys' cross country teams from nineteen sixty-five, nineteen sixty-seven, and nineteen sixty-eight into the State Hall in, to Exeter's Hall of Fame for winning the state competitions for each of those years. Um, the boys' wrestling team is also doing very well. Um, two weekends ago, they secured the BCI double A individual and team titles, uh, for the county. And of the twelve wrestlers that competed in all of their separate weight classes, each one of them medaled, which is the first time in our school's history that that has occurred. I have a couple of other things as well. Trying to keep this straight. Um, on a personal note, uh, I'll be attending the girls' basketball team for their senior night on February third and I invite all the board members to join me. Um, they'll be playing the Brandywine Bullets, uh, which for those of you who may or may not know is the school that my fiancee went to. Uh, so we'll be both in the stands and I'll kind of be pushing her over as we, uh, win. So I encourage all the board members to join us and, and give me some backup because she can push harder than I can sometimes. Um, in addition, Mr. Rug is here. And recently, as I think most of the board members saw, he was featured in the Red Eagle, uh, as a compliment from one of the bus drivers for the district that complimented his work with his team uh, for making sure that his wrestlers were extremely, uh, kind, respectful, and collegial with everything that they were doing. And it emphasized that that's something that he does regularly. In addition, when I was looking at this, I found on Twitter, uh, one message from a kid that I had gone to school with, um, Scott Baker, who wrote, "Coach Rug is one of the biggest role models I've had in my life. Can't thank him enough." So I just wanna congratulate Coach Rug for the excellent job he's doing. Um, and I think for the excellent program that he is overseeing, uh, both at the youth level and at the stolactic level for the secondary schools. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Um, Curriculum Committee, Mr. Tucker.
I'm looking forward to our first meeting coming up, so, um, and vote to come from, from that. And I'm looking forward to working with the Curriculum Committee, specifically Dr. Winters. So we look forward to, uh, giving you a report soon.
Thank you.
Um, to be determined.
To be determined.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Brady.
We have a few wee things I'd like to bring up this evening. First, I'd like to recommend that the Board of School Directors approves the use of Lauschel Gymnasium and associated bathrooms and parking facilities for a year-round practice facility for Exeter youth wrestling. Subject to the ability of the wrestling program to fund and provide equipment for the safe operation of the program. Contingent on district policy requirements and submission of facility use application.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make some comments, I-
Sure.
This Monday, a week ago, we had a very good turnout for the wrestling program as we continue our discussions. For several months, almost probably almost a year, I think, we've been going back and forth with the wrestling program, trying to find a home for the youth program because of the fact that they have certain requirements to have their mats in place year-round, we're trying to find a facility. And we had a really good back and forth conversation to understand their needs and their requirements. They had a very good turnout the other evening. I'd say it may not have been a hundred, uh, families, but it was probably close to that. Um, it was nice to see the interest. I don't think that, I would say that that wasn't the main reason we decided because it wasn't a pressure, peer pressure thing. But I think it was very nice to, for, I think, for those individuals to see how the process works too. The fact that, you know, we could have a good conversation, understand what our restrictions are, the use, other uses of the building. I, I, I look forward to having the wrestling program being more productive and doing great things as they feed onto our junior high or senior high program. So Coach, thank you once again for working with us and letting us work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Policy Committee.
I just had a question, Dave. Do we, um, which, uh, district policy is this contingent on, just so I'm-
Wow. Uh-
Seven, seven, seven.
So are you?
Yeah.
And when we say provide equipment for the safe operation of the program, that, that, that's, that's not anything other than a mat, right? I mean, we're not-
I, I believe that was, uh, there was anything except a mat.
I would look to the coach to provide information regarding anything that they would need. The main thing is that it's supposed to be a zero cost to the district other than we provide the building, the lighting, the heat, et cetera. They're to provide all the necessary equipment to be able to have the activity with the children.
Okay, I was looking for clarification. So it's just, uh, equipment to run the wrestling program.
Correct.
Mats, et cetera.
Right, thank you. Any additional discussion? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second?
Two seconds?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have another item I'd like to bring up. Um, following our meeting that we had with the wrestling group, we then commenced to have our facilities meeting where we reviewed some of the ongoing programs that we're looking at building out, we're putting together some RFPs, requests for proposals for several of the projects that we have coming on board. But in addition to that, we had a, a visit from the youth cheerleaders who are also looking for a home. Um, we're working right now to see where we can locate them. They're, the great thing about Exeter is we have a lot of children who participate and a lot of evening activities and sports. The bad thing about that is we have limited space available for other children to participate in other activities and sports. So right now, we're trying to identify a suitable location in the school district. And once we can come together on that, then we'll probably look to have a meeting with the cheerleaders to, to discuss, you know, does this work for you, why it works for us, and see if we can come to an amicable agreement on that, so we know what we did with the wrestling program.
Could I just add to that really quick? Bob, have you heard any work or have you guys had a chance to start working with them at all? Cause I know that the email that they had sent originally was referred to you prior to that meeting. I mean, uh, uh, after that meeting.
Well, what we've done since that point, Hunter, is we've taken an inventory of every one of our buildings and our usages from six AM to nine PM plus every day, including weekends, to find out what is, what space we have available. But this time, I'd like not to go further than that as we're still trying to riddle through who uses what and when. But yes, there's, during the last week plus, we've been really trying to see what is available that we could use. But it's, it's very challenging, um, just because we have very active programs that are pretty much year-round. Um, if not year-round, school year-round is like-
What he said. I see what he said.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Brady. Uh, Policy Committee, um, Policy Committee has been working, uh, in collaboration with, uh, Dr. Miller on revision of a couple of policies. One is, uh, uh, policy one thirty-seven point one, which has to do with extracurricular participation, uh, by home school students. And, uh, we're looking to expand that opportunity for home school students, particularly in areas, uh, I think, Hunter, if I'm not mistaken, in primary areas banned that could relate to other extracurricular activities. Right now, you know, um, the, the policy one thirty-one point, one thirty-seven point one does allow home school students to participate. However, there are certain cases where they're not able to participate and it has to do with, uh, cases where there's a mandatory academic program or component to that program during the school day. So we're working through that through, through the policy revision process. Um, and in, in conjunction with that, policy one thirty-seven, uh, which is the home education program, which, uh, was brought up again by, by Mr. Mr. Aaron's. And the idea there is really to, uh, provide opportunities for home school students to participate selectively in specific academic subject areas during the school day. Probably secondary level students, but that's yet to be, I think, finally determined. Um, the policy right now, I think, is in the, in the hands of the administration and Dr. Miller to take a better look at it, to have conversations and discussions in terms of potential impact and, and how that policy should actually be flushed out in terms of, you know, specific language and how, how far it will go to accommodate students. Uh, but subject to that review, we'll come back to the Policy Committee and we'll be reviewing that with the board in upcoming meetings. Anything else I missed on that?
Uh, I would just add that, uh, I think at this point, we have, um, an early draft of a language proposal, uh, for one thirty-seven point one. So it still needs to go through some internal processes, but we have a starting point. Um, and from that starting point, we'll hopefully come to the board, uh, in February, possibly March to be, uh, to be approved by the board or not.
Thank you. Technology Committee, Mrs. Baker.
Well, of course, we've heard from Joe Way, so you've heard all the good things that are going on in the district and, and, you know, all the updates that we're doing in technology. Uh, I think probably in March, we'll probably be ready to have a, you know, the budget will be pretty well, well-together. And I think the Technology Committee will have a, a meeting and we know, uh, how do we want it. So, um, you know, anybody else that wants to get in here, you know, will be. And then in April, as, um, Mr. Way said, we will have the, uh, Technology, um, Fair. And I, I know last year it was an absolutely great, uh, exhibit, that, that kids all loved it. Um, the parents, the parents were there involved in it and, and I think, you know, you as a board member in the community should come to see the Technology Fair. It is really amazing.
Thanks, Mrs. Baker. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Hager.
Yes, um, I went to my first meeting on, uh, Monday, January fifteenth. Um, it was great, uh, there were people. I'm still getting feel for the foundation. Uh, the foundation, I believe, has the potential to be a great asset. I'm really looking forward to that and working with them. Uh, ECEF has a wide and varying makeup. Uh, there's lots of alumni, staff, parents, and community. Um, there was very knowledgeable plethora of people, uh, knowledgeable about our district and they all really are driven to help Exeter succeed. Um, I'm looking forward to our next meeting and continuing to learn more about the ECEF and sharing that with the board.
Thanks, Mrs. Hager.
Can you give us any idea what they've been doing since, uh, September?
Well, yeah, the director's here. She would like to speak. She loves speaking to the public.
Yes, my favorite thing. Um, since September, we have been-
Come on, thanks to the lady.
My favorite. Um, we have been getting acclimated with what's going on. Um, one of the bigger things is with, um, Dr. Davies leaving. We, he has been the person that has given our, us our wish list of items. So that's why we're excited to get to know Dr. Winters and get to work with him and start to work on a wish list for the district. So that's what we've been doing is kind of just backend work. Um, we have a couple of board seats that we're trying to fill, um, Facebook, marketing, that's one of our bigger things too.
Thank you. Um, Burke's career in Tech Center Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Verdant.
Well, I'll be attending my first meeting tomorrow evening, so I'm looking forward to that.
I'd like to say too, I attended the, uh, as the alternate to that, to that joint operating committee, I attended the orientation, uh, last week. And I was just so impressed, you know, with Dr. Kraft, who is the executive director. Uh, we toured the, uh, West Center, which is an amazing facility and had an opportunity to meet with their business manager. And I think, I think he's got a great, uh, tenure on that, on that. and had an opportunity to meet with their business manager, and I think he's going to have a great tenure on that committee. And, and one of the people there was a representative of the district, except for, you know, Mr. Brady.
Real quick, I think that Russ had talked about the opportunity that they wanted to give us for a full board tour and also food. Can we please follow up on that? You know, there was...
That was me. That was Russ.
That was you?
Dr. Kraft, actually, his offer, and we have not accepted yet because the board has to tell us if we want to do that. It would be in the spring sometime, but they would do that.
Well, I want to accept it, so I think the board should tell everybody, it's up to two. It actually is a really phenomenal facility, and I got to tour it with Representative Mark Rosi when I was working in his office. And it was, they have an amazing program, and it'd be really cool, I think, if the entire board got to go take a tour and get free food, because they have a functioning restaurant there during the school day that the students make the food for students and other people who come in as well.
Right, I'll just add, I did learn that it's a board meeting and a dinner at five o'clock, very classy.
Yeah.
Dr. Phillips, why don't we do that?
We have done that in the past. We did that two years ago.
Is there take-home options?
No.
No.
No, no doggy bags, no take-homes. They check your bag to make sure you didn't dump content in there. No concealed alcohol.
You seem to know a lot about this, Mr. Brady. Has this been a frequent flyer thing for you?
No, you try the doggy bag.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. BCIU Board of Directors, on the 18th, I attended my first meeting as a new board member. There were five new board members in attendance. Now, the, they have a pretty extensive agenda. They cover the BCIU's homeless program, which, you know, here in the county serves 1,600 children throughout Berks County and is also the, the Center for Services within six county, within a six-county area and serves 6,500 students annually. So, a big initiative on the part of BCIU for the homeless program. They talked a little bit about the, the free cyber workshop that's coming up, and something that I will bring to the board's attention on Thursday, March 22nd, at the Inn at Reading. There'll be a free cyber safety workshop on social media and the internet. Special, special speaker who will actually be talking about, you know, what kids are experiencing today regarding to technology and the world of dangers that come along with the technology. So, an outstanding program available, and that's from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on March 22nd. Or from 6:00 to 9:00, an identical session on that evening, March 22nd, at the Inn at Reading, free.
And we shared with all our staff, all our groups, and as well as on the internet, around our website.
The, at the meeting, they also introduced and voted on the new IT director, who actually lives in our district. He, he was there in attendance and went through the process of approval. And also, we, we talked about their budget for the upcoming year, and our school district mandated service budget for next year, which will be $49,650, with no increase from, for last year. And those are the services that they provide for, for school districts. So that's the end of my report.
You know, I'm very interested in preschool education, and I was wondering, I know last year the BCIU had provided two classrooms here in Exeter for children that, you know, are in need of having preschool. And I was wondering, is there any, was there any talk on that issue to maybe expand that?
As I said before, that's all contingent on the state budget. We were sweating out last year's budget, and it came in just in time to get us that second class. There's no guarantees we're going to have two classes again next year. It's all based on budget. Senator Brown, who's in Lehigh County, I sort of carried up to him when I was down in Harrisburg, and I've invited him to come see our programs. I talked to Senator Schrank about coming out. We're going to do everything we can to publicize the fact that it's great for kids. The budget is going to be the budget, though, and that's, that's all the IU can do.
Well, maybe Jerry, you're our legislative liaison, you know, maybe you can talk to some of the senators and representatives that represent Berks County here in the state for, you know, for that program. Is that preschool, I mean, for 3K is just a wonderful thing for kids that can close that opportunity gap and, you know, get into school and be successful.
Well, let's talk. I'll be glad to do it.
Thank you.
Legislative liaison, Mr. Gill.
I have had meetings with, just get-to-know meetings, with each of the legislators, the state legislators who represent Exeter except for Dave Maloney. We've not been able to get schedules together yet. But I just wanted to say to everybody, if there are any concerns, I'll gladly take them to him.
Well, I know... Representative Gill is on the education committee. So, you know, maybe you can talk with him. I know he's a good friend of mine, but, you know, maybe you can talk with him about that. I mean, it's, and he could even have one of his staff members come and look at the program here at the preschool at Lauton Creek. I mean, it is absolutely, I was amazed at how much the children learn, because I've seen them last year, and I've come in and I've seen them this year. And it's a well, the money there is well-spent, because, you know, the kids that get through this program are usually very successful in school, and the researches that these kids that, that, you know, can close that opportunity gap, they don't end up in the school to prison pipeline. You know, they are successful, and they go on, graduate, and become successful citizens. So, for me, it's, it's, it's near and dear to my heart.
Let's talk.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Township, borough liaison, Mr. Brady.
Yes, I would like to let you know that Dave and Jerry and Hunter joined me at the December 27th meeting. We're just looking to reengage with Exeter Township and sort of align our efforts where it makes sense to align. I have a number of issues. I met with Lisa Vanderline and John Granger on Friday. I won't go through all of those now, but we will periodically be doing updates and sharing information back with the board on a variety of issues. And from time to time, we'll invite the township in to make presentations where it's relevant to the, to the school district. Still continuing to try to reach out to St. Lawrence to make a connection with Allison Leinbach. We've traded emails, but as of yet not had the opportunity to connect or present to their borough council. And if I could ask, if we could add to the agenda an update on Personnel Committee?
Yes, please.
I know that it was not active for, it's like an old volcano, wasn't active for a long time. But I think we'll be spewing soon here. We are working on a variety of different issues on personnel. I'd like to try to have a Personnel Committee meeting prior to either the next workshop or the voting meeting. We'll work that out. We're trying to cluster the meetings where we're all going to be together so that we can make the best use of people's times. There's a variety of issues that we're working on. I won't get into all the details now, but we are re-envisioning the role of the committee. We're going to look out and try to make connections with stakeholders and deal with a variety of issues in conjunction with the superintendent. And I was glad to see your email today about the forums in the schools, because that's not necessarily a Personnel Committee responsibility, but an important outreach and connection for us.
I'd like to say something about the, the after-school programs that we go to. I know you said some people are working, and it would be difficult for them to, you know, come right after their work. But I do think if we would schedule them in the evening, we would lose a lot of the teachers there. So I, I don't think that's a good idea to do that, because, you know, you know, teachers have a lot of things going and, and, you know, they can't, you know, they do do other things other than, you know, they have their schoolwork and everything else. So I think it's very difficult for them to be coming back at seven o'clock, and we would lose a lot of the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, it's really tough. We've got six buildings we want to try to cover. We'd love to have conversations with district staff and find out what they're thinking, and to allow them to know what we're thinking in terms of the operation of the school district. It's just finding that time that's convenient for most people. So the purpose of my communication is really to try to find out when folks are best available, when they, when they, when they can make it, and maybe we can figure something out that would be mutually agreeable to, you know, both the teachers and the, and the board members. So it's tough right now. I think we have just a few people who are able to come to work today. Most folks in the board are working, and, you know, it's tough when we ask you to take away time from whatever the unit's got, additional chances. Back to you, Mrs. Page, for any requests.
All right, we have a payment request of $932,171.64. These are total payments from the general fund, and I know that we pay our bills and get on with it.
Second. Any special comments? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. One more time. Thanks, Mrs. Page. Superintendent's report, Dr. Phillips.
As usual, we have many fine things to celebrate in the district. What I'm passing around to the board, and I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of other copies. This is a picture of an artwork from Madison Sakonas. She was selected as the artist in residence, if you will, at the IU on behalf of Exeter Township. She will, she was hosted at a reception on January 18th, presentation of a certificate. A small gift was given to the students as well. Her artwork will hang in the boardroom for the entirety of the 2018 school year. Each year, the Division of Federal Programs honors the top-performing Title I schools in Pennsylvania. High achievement schools are the highest 5% of Title I schools based on English, English Language Arts, English Language Arts, ELA, math, PSSA proficiency, and they have met all four annual measurable objectives, AMOs, like our letters. They were worth high-progress schools, or the highest 5% of Title I schools based on ELA and math Pennsylvania value. Added Assessment System, or PMAS, growth, and met all four AMOs. They have selected 120 Title I schools to be named distinguished schools based on that criteria. Using that criteria, Lorraine Elementary School had been selected, or has been selected, to be a Title I distinguished school for the 2017, 2018 school year. And all distinguished schools we honor at a conference during a ceremony out toward Pittsburgh. Berks County Science Olympiad. On January 11th, the Exeter High School Senior Science Olympiad Team traveled to Kutztag University, competed in the Berks County Invitational Science Olympiad. Exeter High School was the highest-scoring Berks County team, placing second overall in the competition, and brought the Joanne Burak Trophy back to Exeter High. Westchester Bayard Ruston took the first place overall. The following students placed in these events. First place in astronomy was Sophia Scivoria and Adish Randhawa. Second place, disease detectives, Michaela Root and Sidharth Muparaju. Started killing that name. Second place, dynamic planet, Evan Danachi and Chris Good. First place, Fermi questions, Andrew Ellis and Sophia Scivoria. First place, perfatology, Emily Gillespie and Nolan Watts. First place, microbe mission, Ishika Kadahapu and Siddharth Muparaju. First place, mission possible, Nick Siabatoni and Sidharth Muparaju. Third place, mousetrap vehicle, Nick Siabatoni and Chris Good. Third place, towers, Nick Siabatoni and Evan Danachi. Our next competition will be May, March 11th, and it will be the Central Eastern Regional Science, will be held at the Coestown University. Christina Pinkerton, art teacher, congratulations. Go to the following students, having their artwork juried at the Yocum Art Institute Countywide Art Show. Jade Hahn, who took second place, Andrea Keck, Liz McFarland, Lauren Posey. Casey Sears, who took second honorable mentions. Amy Schmail, who took first honorable mention. Maya Sims, Grace Burts, Paige Wells, and Andrea Shuka. Concerning a Penn State-Berks partnership. The district has been working over the past several months to establish a partnership with Penn State-Berks professor, Dr. Christine Mitchell's pre-service teachers. Dr. Mitchell's literacy course requires education majors over in their third, in their third year to spend four hours a week over a four-month period working in kindergarten, first, or second grade classroom, observing and completing various balance literacy projects and assignments. Dr. Mitchell and Julie Klein have been able to confirm the placement of eight students into several of our kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms at both Lorraine and Lauton Creek. Just wanted to report, I attended a Derek Donunzio's class, A Remembrance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This year marked the 50th anniversary of his assassination. The fourth grade class performed a play entitled Sitting Down for Dr. King. The play was inspired by true events of the many sit-in protests at restaurants by African-Americans in 1960. Very much, I report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Bob, or any, the other board members who'd like to be heard, please.
Have we had an update on the lawsuit related to...
No, we haven't. No update. Questions, comments? Do you all accept a motion for adjournment?
Absolutely.
Second? Board of members, thank you.